Thank you, Your Lord, for this good day and a blessed season. I thought this was a state of the... I thought the findings were not here. Heavenly Father, I pray, Lord, to give us knowledge of everything that's right this season. I thought that, Heavenly Father, thank you for all that you've done for us. Most of all, thank you for the plan of salvation. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're ready for the roll call. Everybody push present if you're here. Push the firing button. Okay, give us the total.
Fourteen yes, one absent.
We all have in your package the minutes of the previous meeting. We also need to approve the minutes of the special call commission meeting on 1:30, 12:00. Do we need separate motions for the vote?
I think most of them through the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion by or accepted by Nance. Any discussion, any directions? See, all those in favor? Are we ready to vote? Everybody press yes to approve them, no to not approve them, and then pressure confirm button. Okay, give us the vote, sir. We got fourteen yes, motion, aye, two no. Now we have a motion to...
No.
Okay.
In this first reading of every name on the vote, can we say that everyone voted in the affirmative to the change? Do we have to let word go?
We're losing a lot of time. I haven't been going over and calling off everybody's name and now they're voting. Joe, what's your suggestion?
I think that would be acceptable. As long as we have the record that clearly demonstrates how each one votes, then that's okay. And if you're going to jump to no vote, then that means others vote yes. If somebody says that he wants the record to reflect that.
Or absent.
Right. And with care, we call out the votes, and then if any commissioner disagrees with the vote call, as you say, you have to identify whatever sign is, then you would bring that to the attention of the chair. Well, yes, as long as there's a mandate that will just identify how each commissioner votes, that's okay.
But if you could say if everybody voted in the affirmative to the change, Bob Walden absent.
Well, yes, you could say that. Say, "I'm all for the yes," and you have Bob Walden.
Yes.
For your part.
Would that make... Would that make Madam President?
He's for that. Are we in motion? Okay, now we need a motion to approve the special call commission meeting minutes of 1:30. Motion by Oryx, accepted by Bobby White. Any discussion? Anybody in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, vote no. Motion by Oryx, accepted by Bobby White, and then pressure confirm button. Okay, show us the vote, sir. We got fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Motion approved. Next, we'll move on to the notary renewals. I have a motion to approve. We have one.
My question is, I think there's some seriously serious complaints about the rest of the meeting. Do you all have a rest of the meeting tonight?
That happens in our workshop.
We didn't have one.
We didn't have one in our workshop. That happens at the workshop. That's the rule.
Can we not delegate our time, though? If... And they don't want them, if they don't stay, they don't want to address this, but if one of the commissioners wanted to delegate some time, though?
At the workshop. Joe, could one of us delegate our time? Ask the wrong person.
Now, I have... The procedure that you have passed is to delegate the rest of the workshop. But, you know, that is a counter to the... With the permission to structure, you know, on particular nights to allow someone to rest the mission, you know, that would be time to guard the votes of the commission.
So what, if they wanted to address the commission, one of us would just make the motion and then have a vote.
We have room to have a motion to dispute, and then post an house bill, set those through the workshop. But, yes, we're hot.
Thank you.
Okay, we have four renewal, Harley Hill, Mark A. Wells, Rebecca Lowe, and Kristen McKeon.
Motion approved, no, no, no.
Motion by Oryx, accepted by Sue Nance. Any discussion? Are those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, vote no, and then pressure confirm button. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Show us the vote, madam. We got fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent.
Does anyone have to be here to vote?
I think yes. I agree with you. I agree with you. I agree with you. Everything, Paul, you know, that I agree with you. I agree with you. Or you can... We're just looking at...
Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Renewals are approved. Okay, we have two new applicants, Ashley Harrell and Natalie Burr.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Oryx, accepted by J.R. Bates. Any discussion? Any work? See, everyone has... Yes. Okay. All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no, and then pressure confirm button. If anyone wished to change their vote? Show us the vote. We have to announce those two, so...
You did. On the notary shooting.
Announce the vote, Madam Clark.
I agree with you. I agree with you. I agree with you. I agree with you. Paul, you know, that I agree with you. I agree with you. Or you can...
Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Do that, we're approved. Next, I entertain a motion to approve committee reports in minutes.
No, approved.
Okay, those are listed, J.R. Bates Committee, Waizumene, EMS Committee, Education Committee, and Legislature. We have a motion to approve. I got to say... Okay, now we... What we're approving, the Waizumene Committee minutes, the EMS Committee minutes, Education Committee minutes, and Legislature minutes. We approve the jail committee minutes. Last time, if they were not on the... Then the rules, and approve them in a separate motion. Everybody in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no, and then pressure confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. We got thirteen yes, Tom Hatmaker, no, Bob Walden absent. Minutes are approved. Now I need a motion to suspend the rule and approve the jail committee minutes of 3:15, 12:00.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Motion by Oryx, accepted by Bobby White, suspend the rule. Everyone in favor of suspending the rules, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no, and then pressure confirm button. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Do that, we're approved. Next, we...
In the rules.
In the rules, exactly that. Now I need a motion to approve the jail committee minutes of 3:15, 12:00.
Motion to approve the jail committee minutes of 3:15, 12:00.
Accepted by J.R. Bates. We're voting to approve the jail committee minutes of 3:15, 12:00. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, vote no, then pressure confirm button.
Yeah, did you ask for discussion?
I did not. You want to discuss something?
I don't know. I was going to ask, why does change order number five and seven?
Excuse me, I'm going to...
Five and seven, the change order, do you know what it was?
Uh, the change order five and seven dealt with the provisions that the sheriff had requested for several different items. One of them was the retrofit at the loading dock. One of them was for some changes to office, part of the profits from the west. One of them involved changing a wall for the mushroom and changing the new work inside of the office, and they changed the nurses.
Which amendment? Part of amendment?
The college hundreds of fifty thousand dollars, and the sheriff provided those ninety-five hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh. Oh, nice.
Okay, anyone wish to change the vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Jail committee minutes of 3:15, 12:00 are approved. Next, we'll take up the budget amendment.
Yes, sir. I can only approve budgets from the 4-1 through 4-17.
Motion by Oryx, accepted by Sengly, to approve budget amendments 4-1 through 4-17. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, vote no, and then pressure confirm button. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, have conflict.
Aaron. Please approve.
I don't have a conflict.
Alvin Evans.
Sue Nance.
How's that call?
I just want to state that I didn't get my package till Saturday, and I was gone and didn't get back, didn't get a chance to go through them, so that's why I'll be voting no.
Okay. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Twelve yes, Tom Hatmaker, Scott Stanfield voting no, and Bob Walden absent. Budget amendments are approved. Next, we'll entertain a motion to approve all reports that are down the officials, all departments, and all other reports, including the sales tax report, which is in this handout. Motion by Adrian. I'm saying that, too, with... Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way we can change the statement to reflect the reports included within the document? Because we're still missing the 9-1-1, North Regional EMS, and the Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. The process we use for certain years is a numeric precision, and if the fact of the report isn't there, then obviously you can't be approving some of the business included.
Right. It's not... If the report is not included, then it does not get included in the minutes that Mary writes up.
Correct.
What's wrong with just changing, yeah, the present reports? I mean, it's a simple change.
The answer herefore has been that the packets sometimes come out on the rotation side of the second Monday to be in the hands of the time being given to that court of constitutional office to have it, of course, submitted. And you are... The agenda is designed as a dead-on thumb that they're going to be forthcoming and not necessarily be absent at the commission meeting, but be absent at the time of the package. So you have until, I think it's the 10th or the 12th, to get... Okay, you have to attend to the month to figure your report and submit it. And I think actually means something actually that they had actually put fourteen or fifteen on there, so they have to... You're probably about that, obviously. You have to put them on the app. So with the second Monday following the way it goes, that's when you have the workshop, sometimes the second Monday will be on the eighth day of the month, and you wouldn't have them before taking the vote.
That's fine. I'll just continue to go up there and look for them.
It could be in the motion, or it's all done, you may want to plot by your motion to be approved, all the reports are in the pack, as opposed to some call fire like that. We just always view it as you couldn't possibly be approving something that was that...
If the reports comes in late, they are not approved until the next meeting, right?
No. In the example, I'll just give a...
Let's give an example. Line 1-1, last two months, we've not had no reports from those.
At all.
At all. At all. But say if theirs came in a week later, those are not approved.
They are.
Are they going to be approved the next following meeting?
Could be or not. There's no...
I mean, I can see what you're saying, Jeff, and I can see what Tom's saying. Just to be on the safe side, I'll make the motion that we...
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion...
If that's fine, you're a motion maker to include all reports that are... That's in the package. That are there. In our package. Okay. And I'll second that.
Everybody understand the motion?
Do you want to accept that? I'm going to withdraw my motion because I was under the impression, just like Jeff said, that anything not present will be approved. I guess it's kind of splitting hairs, so somebody can take it from here to go forward.
I'm going to make the motion to approve these ones that he turned out. They didn't make it so blunt, but I liked myself, Dave, when he turned out. And not saying nobody will slide one through in on us, but I know if it's listed or not listed, I feel it will come flat to lay down.
I'm not saying anybody. I'm just saying I wanted to approve the ones that we had, and the ones that wasn't here couldn't be approved.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed?
How do you change? Is this thing... It's exactly the same as it was in the original format. It's a...
The motion, the motion is to approve all reports that are in front of you tonight in the pack. Motion by Oryx, accepted by Sengly, and discussed it, and I think everybody has voted. Anybody wish to... No, Alvin Evans, you need to confirm your vote.
I'm not sure what I'm doing.
Oh, okay. Whatever he confirms, I don't have any issue with it.
Yes or no?
Anybody wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Reports are approved.
Mr. Chairman. We have just a quick discussion, but first prepared names of the reports that are in the pack. And, please, there, there's a bunch that, at the next phase, when you approve it, you got something that says, you want those in the...
She always does. Yeah, she lists the... She lists the community reports, that's right. She lists the...
The data for the tour, the...
All the reports are listed, not where they came from, the month they came from, and Okay, under other matters, we have some meth quarantine property in the winter tax sale Three properties, the commission needs to make a motion to move whether or not to place bids on these properties.
We need a motion, it's too quick.
Yeah, make a motion to move, be that quick.
Make a motion that the county does place bids on.
It was right here and back. Thank you, Mr. Terry Sengly. Okay, now we're ready to discuss. Bobby White?
Okay, if you can only do not make a bid on, maybe on the tax...
Uh, Mr. Coke?
Each property that goes through the winter tax sale, if offered first, will be a dollar amount of the winter tax due to the property. The county, why aren't they by law, they like, they make it to the month of each property, and it's a total...
Mr. Frisberg's not taking the lead.
There are.
We found a red bull.
Each property, ten mated property, probably one of them, which is not planned to be on a property, which would not be offered in the sale.
I've tried to talk him to leave, and I just couldn't hear him.
The county can place a bid on.
That's what she wants, to the property.
And the commission tells them not to...
Place you do this.
On those property, I read that, maybe we got bid on all four, I expect. Or maybe you want to...
We're going to do backdoor stretch, what's that?
But I don't think the county will step heavily on it.
We need to have a place to fill all the fix things.
Well, in that case, if the county places, everyone bid on it, but if anyone...
Well, not any of them, but if you buy construction...
No, it's all valid, it's in the deal. But let's just write for the back of the... There's a total amount of taxes given, bringing in college, there's nothing else. Where it answers, the minimum of twelve, if the county places bid on that property, all property, western property, so you're now to deal with the money, you know. If any person wants to match that bid, then that started out, I did a hundred dollars, and then you're there, harder than you have to, and then it does the time it took.
So we're fine if we just place a match, if they didn't bid.
Well, we'll... If you place a bidding bid on a contaminated property, and you want that to be, then at some point, you might have to clean it up, and you might have to pay the cost.
It cuts more than that, property.
Before you do, let me ask a question.
We'll come back to you in just a second. Rest of you, Oryx?
Joe, on this property, for instance, if it ends up back in somebody else's hands, the state law forces them to clean this property up before it can come and inhabit, right?
Certainly, how does it form things? That is recorded in the registered data, and that knows, and it's not also posted on the property, because you can't inhabit this property again until it is just released and inspected. And you have the contract with some company, some event to clean it up, and this certified that this property is now clean and inhabited, so someone will come back and visit. So the county is actually doing the same position as it does here, and you're not pretty good at this, because down seven, you bid on it, you want to sell it to somebody that's willing to handle it, and you have to have that. Or you contract with the bid, or with the person you want to sell it to, but that is if everybody's cleaning that, so they need to be in it. There is not the occupancy of the property until it's cleaned up.
Who keeps up with that, Joe? Who keeps up with somebody goes into it and occupies it? Are they a hold put on it from the property assessor's office, from the sheriff's department that says you cannot get utilities at this location?
No. It's a balance that the board that is...
But once somebody purchases that property and they don't clean it up, are they somebody that... Are the guidelines that the county, either sheriff's department has to follow, the property assessor's office to make sure that it's being cleaned up for the inhabited? Or is it state government? Have a law chief?
The department, yeah.
Department of Health was...
Who's the one that's charged with that responsibility, and I'm quite sure that if somebody inhabited a property that they did it after it's been, that it's been quarantined, they would take that. Whether that's with the company or with it.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to Bobby?
As long as someone else other than the county buys it, it stays on tax roll?
Yes.
Okay. Bobby White?
I would like to change my...
I just wanted it up for discussion, so we're good.
Yeah, I would withdraw. You're the second?
Sure.
And you want to withdraw your motion?
And please do.
Okay. You're making the motion that the county do not place a bid on the meth quarantines property.
And I'll second that as well.
Everybody understand the motion? Any discussion?
We're moving down to the table, and for a private individual to bid on it, that is to the best of their point of view, not like they're bidding on it.
The one that they sent over here to me only has Lester's name.
That's good.
So take off Charles.
He was big time and probably the mayor and the chair of the board of aldermen. I'm correct. No, I understand correctly, it's got Charles in me.
Who's chairman of the recreation committee? Who's the chairman of the board?
Chairman of the recreation committee, I have a card in the sign of the contract.
They didn't lessen less.
So, so don't we need to give a new... Make the motion for a perfect contract that that changes, but if it is signed by two, the mayor, by the chair of the mayor, by the board of aldermen, by Mr. Lester here as the chairman, and we'll make those correct. She said there wasn't any.
Who is the chairman of the board of aldermen?
We just admit the last paragraph?
Well, let's just take it out and say that he's the chairman of the board of aldermen. And then we authorize by the board of aldermen to try to see the board of aldermen. So we're making the motion to approve this lease agreement with Lester's signing for the city of Delco.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that move.
Okay, so that's...
I understand.
Okay, everybody understand that?
One more question, I'd just like to make sure, you know, the county's going to build this field, so the city will be involved in this facility, please.
Correct. Right. If there's anything, if there's going to be a cost to the city... I mean, we're, the county is putting in fifty-five thousand dollars. Anything beyond that...
Well, we're making some... But the form of this lease is get the county, in this position, to make improvements to properly that the county would have control on.
Correct.
And the county has made a progress on the present of fifty-five thousand dollars to develop a two-ball field in addition to the located strength. In fact, the, uh, working with the city were to put together a scope of work that then goes out to bid, and the bid received on that was seventy thousand, just fifty-five thousand. At that spot in the road, the city of Delco could make a contribution to the county to add fifty thousand dollars to the amount of funding that the county let's play the body to do this go, and also put up fifty thousand dollars to say so, the buyer to see Delco business receive. But at the end of the day, if it's sometime that there was appropriation before it made available, what's wrong by this county let's play the body to cover the seventy thousand dollars, there would be nothing in the grand plan. We would start off and deal with fifty-five thousand dollars worth of aldermen and three quarters of the job.
So what if we did do that, instead of Delco decided they didn't want to contribute after the bid was done?
We would never stop. That's what I'm saying, that...
How are you going to know?
Take a bid and the bid would tell us whether or not...
And there would never be any changes to that bid, which...
I don't think there were changes or changes yet.
There's never a bid without a change that I know about, usually, change orders.
All bodies have the ability to add changes to it. But if it's sometime that there's appropriation before you, those changes can be approved. Fifty-five thousand dollars the county put in, you know, it's going to be on you. Always says to be dropped, being appropriated.
I know, I know.
All right.
So we put out for this bid, and we have the, I guess maybe the bid, I don't know, approved by the recreation committee, and we need to have enough people to look at it. Tommy said it, because we remember the hot bridge and how it's out of control.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that this scope of work is going to be enough to complete this ball field. We don't want to get fifty-five thousand in and then be fifteen thousand short.
You remember the...
It's like repairing a used car, once you get to one point, you got to finish on up the sixty.
You remember when we were out here last summer, um, we had a meeting and we were trying to come up with a discussion of a post own or action, if it's sometime that Allen was going to come and work up a scope of work and estimate, for lack of a better word, the different components of that scope of work. The commission would have a different alternative, but it would be in concert with the county 's part of down the trail. Unless they thought it could say, that way it would have desire to do a post to proceeding with any type of reference to the work and or construction of the field, they would simply say, well, what do we do to make a contribution? I'm fifty-five thousand dollars to Delco, and if they had those funds, then the funds would be going into your possession, but then you would lose the whole control over what ever got produced from it. And I'm sure that's the reason that Allen is trying to set himself in a position where that the two-ball field wouldn't be built or nothing wouldn't be built, and then it would save the wind of cost of being appropriated and not go over and miss that other thing to prevent it quite much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Jeff? When did Allen become architect on this project?
At the same time we, we, uh, managed to prepare for, um, loaning and adding to a fence estimate associated with the scope of work.
Why would it be his position to provide that estimate?
Well, the intent I could do is, when he immediately asked for funding at the meeting last summer, his estimate for the quest, our middle residence, was for eighty to ninety thousand dollars, I think was the exact number. And after being told that that seems like it was a high amount of cost associated with the scope of work he was describing, the membership encouraged him to go and do a more finite, um, scope of work presentation, the cost estimate associated with that, and I'm positive that Allen definitely wanted to hire an architect, paid him fifty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars to do a twenty thousand dollar project. And that'd be my summation of how that happened. And I actually thought Stan was going to do the... And if I remember correctly, you worked with him on giving your cost estimate again?
If I remember correctly, that's Stan's job?
It's Stan's job to be in the most significant structure by this and give a good estimate and stuff, but is it related to, um, being in best of five or nail down exactly like an architect and, you know, there's no way to do it?
I'm not sitting here saying Allen can't do this, by no means. I think he's doing a good job, I just don't think it's his job to do.
Well, I think if he works with the parties that are available without hiring a professional, and that's what we're trying to do.
J L. Davis?
Uh, and of course, uh, Allen Davis worked in baseball for the last forty years now, uh, down in that area. He's always been most involved in all of this. If there's anybody to turn down, telling me more about him, I'd just show up and be on the scene. Jeff Marv, you know that Johnny, who's some, goes to some bridge, uh, he's just trying to promote things above, uh, if it's a boat call, do you know, if it's a boat, that gets in the...
Okay, we've got...
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve the lease with Mayor Spears being the person that signs for the city of Delco. Everybody read the vote? All in favor, vote yes. Those don't know, and then pressure confirmed. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. We've got eleven yes. Beverly Hall, Sue Nate, Scott Stanfield, voting no, and Bob Walden absent. That's his first. Now we have the adoption contract in the animal control committee at five forty-five. They approved the new adoption contract, the new package. Twenty-nine D.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by the president, approved by the chairman. We approve the new adoption contract. Animal center, agents, deputy, handlers. Any dispute?
Can you give us a little report on Terry?
Look if I can see here. Need some lysis.
Yeah, more Debbie's again.
I can't see, I forgot mine. bifocals. Let me see out of here. We were basically dealing with four and nine.
Five, I bet you said.
Four, five, and nine. No. Dealing with the spay neutering program, as far as how the monies are dealt with, when they, at the time of adoption, they pay the eighty dollars for the spay or neuter program, and it's been held in account, and we're basically doing this for accounting purposes with the finance department of how this money is dealt with, is basically all that was resting. We've got money sitting there now. I think she said approximately about five, six thousand dollars. This is for audit purposes, basically.
Yeah. Use all of the...
Yeah, unanimous, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we have a motion to approve.
We do have a motion.
Okay, um, I wasn't asking, but the, uh, and I'm thinking I've read this, uh, and this will hear profit going forward, but did anybody decide upon what was going to be done with the money that is present? Um, I talked to Joe Williams about it, and maybe don't comment, but my understanding is, because of the being high reward, that those funds that have here before been acquired, that have not been used to do spay neutering, that number one, the first step would be to approach those folks that gave them to us and try to put them back into their hands. And then, if in fact those folks can't be made contact with, then we are listing with a certification, for lack of a word, from state, I found a meeting that would say, all right, we've tried to get over these people, couldn't make contact with them, and then could be then acted upon by the county's commission to become not constrained for the purposes of the spay neutering with them, because that opportunity's gone. But David or Jeff have the authority to just decide that, okay, it's going to be used for eggs, but we never did do it for eggs, now we're going to use it for water, that's not within our scope of doing.
So what if we go forward with this motion and then make another motion to do what...
Can we do that as body as a whole, can we not?
Yeah, but I think you have to go through that, my belief.
Animal control meeting again?
Well, I was going to say, I think that number one, that's all that's good, but four, and you might should make a motion to say, for all those people that cannot be contacted and have a running alternative, then those monies will be, um, accounted for, and then we have to have a resolution, a support commission before those monies could be, since like numbers have a goal that's the appropriate for us to use. Uh, but that first step hasn't happened. It can't be that we just without trying to decide that the funds can be appropriated.
David? Now I continue. There wasn't any discussion in the animal control meeting as it relates to any type of refund. But further, if we've accumulated money to this point, we're obviously going to accumulate it again, what will we do going forward?
That's what we just handled right there.
The word is, in fact, that happened in the time, you know, right in the form of the document.
He's saying all we voted on, David, was from here forward, and I wouldn't understand that either, but I'll come back with a motion to take care of the rest of it.
In section, in section, section eight there, it says that you're aware that the adoption fees, none of the spay neutering, spay neutering fee is returnable if the animal is returned to the center within thirty days.
That's old or new?
It's new.
That's new, yeah.
Four, eight, and nine was what, what exactly? Right.
So they actually did four, but they're going to, they did, have to do, um...
Correct. So now it says, the animal's law, you know, that's what it's in the process, and the animal's use of it will be forfeited in place of the animal's, for general use. So now that language, and what was in the previous contract, we can't just arbitrarily decide that it can be made as good.
It's not the money that the state runs the papers with, you're subtle, Jack, that they have to leash run it for a certain amount of time, and nobody catches on to it, goes to say, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The only thing we did discuss, Jeff, um, it's the possibility of someone out of state adopting a, an animal, that there would be a refund to them if they choose to use a vet of their choice. That, that's the only refund we talked about, David, I can remember.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the new adoption contract.
You do.
All those in favor, vote aye, those don't know, and then pressure confirmed. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. We have fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Contract is approved.
And we didn't do something, Mayor Baird, as far as the...
Entertaining a motion to exhaust all means to contact those that people that had previously, uh, that were...
Previously played, paid the eighty dollars for the spay neuter program, put it in.
Make a motion to dispose of the existing funds, what we call them, uh...
Yep.
Unused spay neuter funds be returned to their rightful owners, those that cannot be located, and those funds will be used for general use of the animal, sir.
So moved there.
We'd like the state doesn't let the paper crawl.
I'm just thinking there won't be any money to go back in the juggle. Well, we've got, we've got records of who pays, so they, we're not going to have any bogus people coming.
He's about six thousand dollars.
Everybody understand what we're doing, understand? They all those in favor, those aye, those don't know, then pressure confirmed. Anyone wish to change your vote? We've got fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. We have a, in your package, right here, check the package. We have a letter from the property assessor's office asking that the player, a surplus, he gets a surplus.
Yes, sir. I take the motion. The letter we received on the ninety-five Bronco from the park sort of, uh, office.
No, I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, second. Did the player, the ninety-five Bronco owned by the property assessor's office, did the player surplus? Any discussion in quick?
Will this be filled after the...
Do you plan, do you plan on selling that on the field? Yes. Yes. They, all those in favor, those aye, those don't know, and then pressure confirmed. Show us the vote. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Motion carried. Okay, we have a resolution requesting the property assessor to assess floating houses. We may have jumped the gun on this. Somebody will make a motion, and I'm going to ask the property assessor to give us a clear indication, and we may decide not to do it. Bobby White made the motion. Charlie Bruce seconded the motion, says approve the resolution. Brad Hart, you're recognized.
I'll do off to make a sound. This is something that has been down, uh, in state, uh, and concerns the non-habitual floating home, so we're having, on, uh, uh, we got this from the EPA last year, uh, we got a little bit of a fair debate on it, like on the year, and that full time, and the first year we started to build, they like, right, it was a couple of years. We can't just go out and, uh, before it runs out, uh, that's half of it, we're doing the, uh, my work is, uh, that's our first option, to be a part. We're already starting to quit, to replace the property, the world, the cost of, uh, we're just, we're darned on those, I believe, of the seeds, three of them, they may have been, uh, third stock, uh, those, for, uh, as the partnership may have, and provide us with, uh, uh, more, uh, that is considered, what they are doing, I don't know, is actually speaking with their party, but I think at that point, time, they're taking their, uh, because of their contract, they can't come to the Dallas law, and they want to make sure that wasn't pre-contracted in the fourth fact. I'm saying that we request both of them, to help us out, to, uh, hold on, uh, Mel and Red, and this, that when we're trying to, uh, do the, 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 last time, uh, like floating home, and they're going to help us. There's some, uh, we have a lot of, uh, living, uh, places, we have a beginner, a office, a, uh, a, uh, the, 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 uh, that one person, uh, building, or structures, we have, have used, uh, three of them, that building, uh, we're all out there, hit the resident structure, maybe two, oh, one, oh, three, oh, five, oh, not, they know, uh, the, uh, 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 these homes very long, uh, making their own, uh, uh, so they can provide, uh, 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 uh,
I mean, I'd like to see it on the back plate, but there are certain procedures that still involve the people who have the property. It means that they're thankful to be.
I'm going to ask Brandon a question. What constitutes a home other than unable to move and uninavable in 180 degree view? Anything else, any time limit, anything else that constitutes it?
I don't know what's supposed to be a home. They have large flat, well, they provide it underneath all year, plenty of water, they provide it for the, for my sire homes. Then they actually say that this and then all that. If they have a public law thing or anything, that's what, um, we're talking about out there earlier, uh, the electrical, so they call them, have electric, so they have steam, water, so they have sewers, so they have tank for that. If you cannot move that structure without that moving, right, it's probably a problem. That's not, not, not necessary.
I know one person, right now, I'm not naming names, that is just used like maybe once or twice a month, just like on the weekend or something, that's still considered a home?
What?
But, like I said, I know one, one, maybe two people that have households out there, and they do not move them. They are just at the dock. They just go out there for leisure, like on the weekends, once or twice a month or something. Is that still considered a home?
Is it built like a home?
It's built like a home, yes.
Built like a house?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's what I'm, I'm curious, that's the information.
If it is not be moved, it is warranted, it's probably a, um, if it's not be moved, if there are reasonable doubt of time, without a reasonable doubt of time, leaving it like a house, but I mean, if you might use common ground, if it's out of steam, water, if you have electric, um, I mean, it's reasonable.
So it's nothing to do with the amount of time that they're on the structures, just what's hooked up to it if they consider it there, basically? Okay.
I think a lot of it's going to be decided whether it's navigable on the waters or not. I think it's going to be left up probably to state legislator when they set down and discuss it.
I mean, there's going to be a fine line, you know.
We verify that, we verify that. It's not even a serious problem, um, if those, you have individual, um, being, like this lady from all that. I think they're moving, you know, they're moving.
There's more than that probably, but, you know, me and you discussed it out in the hallway, you have to have the same stickers, just like my pontoon. They have to have stickers for those, that's why I'm saying it's going to get down to the nitty gritty with the state level, decide this. We probably won't have that decision to make ourselves, what is considered that.
Long overdue, that's why.
And then when it comes back to us, then we'll have to approve what most, what we follow as far as Brandon's office are going out and checking. I mean, I don't want to pay property taxes on a pontoon, they have to set and distinguish. I actually, I heard this talk when we was down in Nashville last week, I don't know if Ken's overheard, Anderson County are talking about it. It's going to be a hot subject probably next legislations soon after.
One of the things we need to take note of on floating homes, sales tax is not included on those. So they're stop free all around. If it's a houseboat, you collect sales tax on it. For floating home, you don't. And it's really not fair. And many of these people that have floating homes rent those for big time bucks a month.
It's like the biggest boat, you have to pay sales tax.
That's right. So the floating home.
How much taxes are you paying on what materials you're buying?
That's right.
You know, you're actually paying yourself. That would be a commercial property being the same. And that would be at a higher tax rate.
Charles Beard.
Will DVA do most of that handling?
They will. I mean, you hear a lot of them saying.
Well, we have to agree with you.
I'm afraid of DVA.
No, it's DVA.
I've got to say it, I've got to say it.
I don't know. Regardless of what, what I'm saying is, we'll have all the guy lines. We'll, they'll have to get out of line, we're very sure, out, well, the, 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 the last day, they did. We have to go with our own, our own.
What if it is, you can, you can't say it's not.
David Adkins.
There's currently a restriction on building any new, um, yeah, floating houses, is that right?
Uh, I know, um, but I didn't know the back third, or you know, because.
Johnny Bruce.
Because I've been knowing that, I've been doing that.
Yeah. Johnny Bruce and Bobby White withdraw their second and their motion.
We, we, honestly, we did this so we can have.
Right, sure.
But you're going to have to let this be itself out when we come to making that argument.
Hey, I, I make, I make the need to be a long one.
Can I ask one question before we close it down?
Yes.
I can't believe that Rusty has a pontoon and I've never been fishing on North Lake. Anyway, that's just lightening a little bit.
We'll go, if he's on my list.
Would you like to make a motion that we table this to a later date? Second by Johnny Bruce?
Hey, I got you there. We'll put him on tax roll.
Okay, that'd be good. Uh, all those in favor of tabling this? Vote aye, those opposed vote no. And then pressure confirmed, but.
Let's do more discussion, can you get some more say?
Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Resolution is tabled.
See, I have one thing that we need to suspend the rules, take up.
Yeah, you're not able to.
Highway safety grant. The sheriff's department.
Second. It's a grant for, and the reason we're having to do this, this grant runs from October to October, goes through some two, two fiscal years. And, uh, total grant is seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, uh, zero local cost. Any other, any questions?
Got a copy of this? We've got no rule of suspension here. Uh, it hasn't been, it's got to be known, man? I'm actually a copy.
Here, we give it to him.
Okay, we're voting on the suspension of the rule. All those in favor, vote aye, those opposed, vote no. Then pressure confirmed, but. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Now I need a motion to approve Sheriff's Department applying for the highway safety thing.
I'll second that.
It's a grant for a blind. Does Eric know what he's thinking about?
Very little.
That's the deal.
I can tell it, you want me to tell them what it's for? You got, uh, forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars will pay personnel. Uh, forty-five hundred dollars is for, uh, travel, meeting, supplies. Forty-seven thousand dollars is seven four. Is, uh, capital purchases, in-car, video camera, video camera data storage server, and a speed trailer. Yeah, when you're going down the road and you're doing fifty, speed limit's thirty-five, start flashing at you, telling you how fast you're going.
You need that, David.
We don't need that.
You need that on North Lake, I believe. And pontoon boats.
Sue, you can ask a question. You're a witness now. Uh, did I, I bet, bet on them. Zero max, zero max.
And, okay.
Free.
And do we have?
Do we have to pick it up, do we have, is there anything you have to pick up after it's over with?
Yes.
After the money runs out. You're going to be, you're probably going to be using people that you already have.
Okay.
Right.
Sort of like a high of grant. Oh, yes. Purple money, man?
You got to go?
No. You okay, Sue?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, vote aye, those opposed, vote no. Then pressure confirmed. Are we? The rebook, yes. Say what, would you change your vote? Show us the vote. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Grant approved.
I think Mr. Young's going to take and check on what I had unleashed, so I'm good. I was going to ask about monies that may be left on the Ivy, Ivy Hollow and Cedar Creek Water Projects, maybe put some hydrants in. Mr. Young's going to check on that, so I'm good.
Uh, is four inches, one inch, you can put me, or not, with the money?
Six, six inches.
Six inches?
Yes.
Is four inches running, with?
Is that not six inches, Mr. Young?
Um, I'm not confused. And now see, bring up the Ivy Hollow and that's not all.
Ain't even started on Ivy Hollow yet.
You've got to have a week of six inches to hide it.
Well, if we got six, if we just want one, if there's a six inch line, I mean.
If none, if they've got a water source, they can do a dry. I'll let you make a statement.
Uh, Steve, on the issue, uh, we need to, uh, spin the rules, uh, if you've got some money involved, you know, I mean.
Oh, my.
You've got money for kids, several problems.
Oh, yeah.
You've got to do that. Yeah. Just spin the rules.
I'll make a motion to spin the rules, sir.
Take up the passing for.
Intern.
When I'll say it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator.
Yes, sir. I can.
We've proved to be committed.
Those budget amendments that we passed tonight takes care of those for us, we do not make a deal.
Well, yeah. A lot of times, just mayor, things are, voting on these, uh, they, they were kind of funny, probably, do not. Do not vote on them, sir. And so, I, I saw this, I didn't see it in the beginning, the budget, the beginning of the year, I didn't see it in there, and so I didn't think it was a good one.
But it has, it has been.
So withdraw.
And it has been bought. Next, um, the, 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 we have to.
To appropriate the money? Okay. Everybody says, uh?
Motion's.
Okay. Kurt Rusty, yeah.
Pontoon. It's about the internship providing the money, and he said it's been covered for in the budget amendment.
Mr. Orton, you're next. We're going backwards.
Well, let me ask you a question. What about the discretionary monies for the sire hives? Did anybody talk about that?
Mr. Young's going to check on that, we don't know if we got any monies.
Ivy Hollow and Cedar Creek.
So.
Discuss it with David, and David is checking on it.
So we're not voting?
Right.
I'll make a motion that we defer the month of May, clean up enough in Campbell County, they're cleaning up.
Something we normally do every year, I think, uh, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Orton, Johnny Bruce. You have a motion, you have a claim, we just clean that.
We normally do this every year, I think, and a few others, get some Bob with it, picks up.
About a week where he'll go and pick up some things. And he'll pick up other things during this time. Appliances and different things.
I got a bunch of tire, I'm going to clean them.
Any other, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, those aye, those opposed, vote no, and then pressure confirmed, but.
Hell, no.
Okay, anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent.
This makes them wait for me, if you want me to do that, I've got some updates on the boat ramps.
Okay, I'll, we'll come back. Tom Hatmeyer.
Yeah, we, we discussed this, um, last month, and I think we need a motion to declare that so that we can proceed with the seal bid, is that correct, Joe?
We have to, uh, guys, we have to clarify, so we need to have some kind of description on it, so we know what, what to declare. I had, I didn't really think, nobody was going to bring a document, or had to start out with some kind of withdrawal, which was probably, I don't know if it's done yet, no, I haven't.
Goes back to Alvin, you just go, that ain't my job. I'm not a surveyor.
Hey, Tom.
Yeah, Stan was supposed to have gotten that.
Didn't we do this last month and give Dennis the right to go out and meet with the people to decide what we did give up and what we didn't?
I don't think we talked about Dennis, we, Stan said that he was going to follow up on it.
Yeah, was going to follow up with the math and the property, and provided it to Joe. So.
He went back to Nashville, he meant, oh, okay.
And, uh, okay. I'm just, we just, I'm ready, so if they didn't have to do a survey, they, they, you know, probably, not bringing in the net, we, we, they had to survey that, or nothing was new, that's, um, um, they didn't have to.
Okay. What are you going to say? Okay.
Talking about, um, the, the, the bridge.
Bridge, it's coming up. Going up that way to be on the right side of the bridge.
Yeah, county bar.
He just needs another, he wants to put a garage in. This is actually Scott's.
But we know, we do know what, what he's paid for.
No, it'd be a sealed bid. Oh, yeah, we know what he paid for, I'm sorry. I thought you said, what will he pay? It's, uh, it just, it's just going to generate more taxes.
At the last, at the March nineteenth meeting, a motion was made by Commissioner Orton, suggested by Commissioner Hatmeyer, surplus properties on his exit stage bridge.
We suggest getting a bottle of Windex and some paper towels first.
I went and looked them two, and I'm not disputing you, but I've seen the two, that bottom, where they operate.
The seals are broke on the cuss line, but they're not cold.
The bars that crosses in the center of the sections are broke loose. They're shot. You have no, you have no air gun gas between that that's going to protect, you're just throwing your money out the window, but if, if that's what.
I'd say not there, none of them.
We're going to match it, I don't think it's true.
Got a motion and a second? Not to seek the grant. So what we're?
I was through with one of the, having to, having to match, the matching grant.
Your, your motion was to replace four windows and the door?
I told him, I think it's six, is what it was, place six and one door.
That's my second. Without seeking the grant, maybe we'll see.
We have a motion and a second. Which one? Second by White to replace four windows. And a what?
A door.
Four windows and a door at the back building. Yeah, we want, yeah, we want. We got, we got phones in the boardhouse, Mike, we got, we got.
Yeah, for four windows and a door, sure. Well, hell, it's four, it's six.
Let's just say a total of six, we'll give, we'll give it option two, might mean a billion. And it's been, what, three weeks ago that I looked at, you can count it.
Six windows and a door.
At most.
Alvin Evans.
For twenty percent, looks like it'd be worth a gamble to, for six windows and a door, twenty percent. I mean, that's, you know, pretty good odds if you get it, but if you don't, you know, you can go right back and do the six and one, but, I, I mean, it's something like it's logical there. Twenty percent, I like it, it's not much.
We're not guaranteed that there's going to be any money left when it gets.
No, I understand that, but just, just put it in there, you know, for the grant, and if you get it, you got it, if you don't, just go and move it.
An hour or two, I'm out. Rusty Orton, update on the boat ramps and so forth.
Last week through, the resolutions that we done to modify the boat ramps on North, I got a chance to meet with, um, with Ed Carter, he's director of TWRA, and Dwight Hensley, and Jay McClellan, uh, these two guys, one's over the waterways and the other one's an engineer, and they're going to come up in about two weeks and look at redoing all their springs. There's a ramp already there, improve the net, Cedar Creek. Cove Lake, the one that was in question, is going to be built this fall. It's done, money's been, been set aside to do that one. Rainbow, improve the, the launch down there, and maybe build a dock where they can launch their boats and come back around and tie their boats off to it. Matty Holler, the one in Pinecrest, is widening that out in Black Coffee. And actually, and surprisingly, I think they may do this. Those monies. Well, Goat Rock Bridge, we discussed it, and they, they'll look at it, but since it's a creek, I don't think it's going to go much more where, as far as a ramp. Now, as far as dedicating it, there's a little park area, La Silla Follet, I think Melvin, the resolution read that we'd become partners and build this, but they're going to look at it too. Miller Bridge for a parking area up there and a place to, not a ramp, but to fish off of. Did very well, met with T-Dot the next day about cutting of the rideaway. I don't know where that's going to end up with. Cinder Jaeger and Representative Powers is pushing to help trying to get it cut. They're supposed to be up here sometime this week or next week, but just get a change, give Dennis them a call, because we need that cleared. There's a big problem with the feds because of the federal money that comes in, anything under four inches, above four inches cannot be cut. So, pardon me? Three ones. And I, my problem, and my questions to them was, why has it never been cut before it got to that point? But, uh, I believe it opened it up, and, and they really appreciative that we sent the resolutions, as they keep sending them, that, that really makes a difference. This is Dennis and Cinder Jaeger, because they know how we stand on those subjects when we send it, and they'll get behind it. But I, I think that some of our free launches will end up getting took care of a whole.
Okay, then on, uh, this Thursday, uh, EMS committee meeting, how early can, can all of you be here at four o'clock? Four thirty?
I can't get up, four, four thirty.
Trying, Alvin. Well, we, we don't have, uh.
This is going to be five thirty.
Well, I know what it says.
You're trying to change, you're not.
We're trying to change.
I got you.
I'll, I'll, I'll be here soon.
Four, four thirty? Sue, can you be here four thirty?
Yeah, I'll be here, Debbie will come working.
Let's see. Rusty, Sue, Alvin, yeah. The week, you be here four thirty? Who else is gone, Mike? Alvin?
Alvin's on it.
Bob Walden, Bob Walden, that's right. Okay, okay. Okay, we're going to have an EMS meeting at four thirty this Thursday, the nineteenth. And May the eighteenth, which is on a Friday, we're going to have a dedication ceremony down at the Career Center. We've already named it the Tommy Seastiner Career Center, but we're having a dedication ceremony on that day. And it'll be, dang, noon. And that's all I have, anybody else have any, Tom Hatmeyer?
Uh, we're not going to have a town hall meeting this month, so there'll be no, no meeting this month. And I'd like to point out that Tuesday and Wednesday when we were in Nashville, we had some really interesting classes down there, some good information that we got down there while we were there. The, the jail refund is going to go to thirty-seven dollars instead of thirty-five dollars. It's two dollars, doesn't sound like a lot, but it's, it's, yeah, it's free money.
Bobby White? Second, uh, Johnny Bruce.